Okay. So let's go, let's go ahead. I think we've got enough people here to go ahead and get started. We have our deputy clerk, Eduardo Gomez, with us tonight. So Eddie, I'm going to ask you if you'll go ahead and take the role, please.
Yes, Alderman Wilson.
And here.
Alderman Russeymans.
Here.
Alderman Sufferton.
Here.
Alderman Revelle.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
And Alderman Wynn.
Here.
All right, thank, thank you, Deputy Clerk. We have all of our Alderman here except Alderman Fleming, and I expect that she'll be joining us shortly. Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, May 10th, 2021 Evanston City Council meeting. Alderman Wilson, would you move a motion that we can hold this remotely?
I move to suspend the rules to allow us to conduct a meeting utilizing the Zoom software system in move in-person meeting in accordance with the governor's prior directives related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
All right, Deputy Clerk, could you take the role, please, on that motion?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Russeymans.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
And Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
All right, thank, thank you, Deputy Clerk. So on an eight to zero vote, the Evanston City Council suspended the rules to allow us to meet virtually, which seems apropos for this council as we finish up, finish up our terms and welcome in the new 81st Evanston City Council. I've got a couple announcements, but before that, I just want to, I have a very short statement. Every four years, we turn over our Evanston City Council. In the past, doing so, we convene one meeting of the current council, then adjourn and convene the new meeting, including swearing in of the newly seated or elected Evanston City Council. This year, it has come to my attention that the procedure of commencing and adjourning two separate meetings has been questioned. Tonight, we plan to recess instead of adjourn at the conclusion of our items of considerations. Specifically, we'll recess, or I'll ask for a motion to recess after recognition of service on our agenda. We will then reconvene, or I will go to the council chambers with all of the newly elected members of the 81st City Council, hand the gavel over to our new mayor, Daniel Biss, and that will occur at 7:30 PM, at which point he and the council, new council members, will be sworn in to this meeting. So with, with that, I just wanted everybody to be clear on the, sort of, process tonight. I've got two announcements. The first one is my final proclamation that I issued for May, and I just want to share this with the public. May 1st to May 31st is Evanston Asian, South Asian, Pacific Islander, American Heritage Month. I think it's particularly important to recognize that. Whereas the observance of National Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month started in 1979 as the Asian Pacific Heritage Week under President James Earl Carter and expanded under President George H.W. Bush in 1990 to cover a 31-day period, starting on May 1st and ending on May 31st. Whereas Celebration of Asian, South Asian, Pacific Islander American Heritage Month 2021 shall be co-sponsored by the city of Evanston, made possible by the coordinated efforts of local Asian, South Asian, Pacific Islander residents, businesses, community organizations, and educational institutions. And whereas during Asian, South Asian, Pacific Islander American Heritage Month, yes, that is a mouthful, recognition is given to the millions of Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander Americans whose long history in the U.S. has helped to build and sustain us as a nation. And whereas it is important to celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of Asian, South Asian, Pacific Islander Americans and immigrants whose ancestors came from East Asia, South Asia, Southeast Asia, and the Pacific Islands, and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the heritage of the Asian, South Asian, Pacific Islander dysphoria. Now, therefore, I, Stephen Howard Hagerty, Mayor of the city of Evanston, Illinois, do hereby proclaim, May 1st to May 31st, 2021, as Evanston Asian, South Asian, Pacific Islander American Heritage Month, and the official designated month for the city of Evanston's annual Asian, South Asian, Pacific Islander American Heritage Month, and call upon the people of Evanston to join together in recognizing and participating in special observances. So I'm really proud that the city of Evanston is sponsoring that this month. You know, one of the, one part of the richness of our community is the cultural diversity that we have here in Evanston, and it's nice to represent that or recognize that in all the different ways that we do. Secondly, and then my final announcement this week is, normally, towards the end of our term, the mayor will award keys to the city, and, and it's a really nice event, and there's just a few handed out every, generally, every four years or so. And, and it's nice, and family and friends and others gather in the council chambers to celebrate those that are receiving keys to the city. Regrettably, we weren't able to do that as a much larger community group, but I was pleased to have awarded five keys this past week to some really amazing organizations and residents here in Evanston. We did that as really small gatherings with those organizations or those individuals and their families in the council chambers. Anderson Castillo, who does such a nice job for us putting on all of our different video events, recorded it and, and put together a three-minute video, and I would like to take a minute and recognize those individuals via this video. So Anderson or Luke, when you're ready, if you could play the video for the public.
It has been a privilege to serve as the mayor of one of the best urban ring cities in America, and on my final day in office and final meeting in office, I have selected three organizations and two individuals to award a key to the city to. It is the highest honor that is offered to me as the mayor to bestow on citizen, a citizen of Evanston or an organization of Evanston. The key to the city of Evanston, there aren't many of these issued, pastor. On behalf of the members of the 80th City Council, it is my honor to present the key of the city of Evanston to Evanston Own It, in honor of their deep commitment to young people in the city of Evanston. It is my pleasure today to award a key to the city of Evanston to the Friends of Robert Crown. On behalf of the members of the 80th Evanston City Council, I am proud as the mayor to present this key to the city of Evanston, to the Friends of Robert Crown, in honor of helping the city build a nationally recognized community center. So it is my honor as the mayor of Evanston, Ike Ogbo, come on over here as, as the director of our Health and Human Services Department, to present you and the department with a key to the city that I hope you will display proudly in your offices for all of your staff and all of our residents to see. And this, this key is presented to, by members of the 80th City Council and myself, to the Evanston's Health and Human Services Department in honor of their remarkable efforts during the COVID-19 pandemic. So Jane, it is my honor as the mayor of Evanston to award you, if you want to come over here so I can still speak, and award you with one of the very few keys to the city that we give out. On behalf of all of the members of the 80th City Council and myself, present this key to Jane Grover in honor of her unwavering commitment to good government on this date, May 10th, 2021. Congratulations, Jane.
Thank you very much.
So Judge, on behalf of the 80th City Council here in Evanston and as the mayor of Evanston, I am presenting you today with the key to the city of Evanston in honor of your lifelong commitment to lifting up the Black community in Evanston into good government in Evanston.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Judge. Good, good job, Ann Anderson. He condensed about 55 minutes into, into three minutes. It was very moving. I wish everyone on the city council could, could have been there. I mean, I think you got a little feel from that, from the videos, but, you know, you had very small groups there. Evanston Own It, several of the pastors were there, Jane Grover had some of her family there, Judge Baptiste had, you know, a bunch of family there. It was really, really moving, and I just want everybody on the council to know how touched all, you know, three of the organizations and the two individuals that we awarded keys to the city were. So I'm really, I'm really glad that we were able to do that and that people took, took the time to see that. So that, that concludes my announcements and proclamations today. I will say that for the council, I would suggest for the resolutions that we have and the special orders of business, that we consider passing those just on the consent agenda, and then we do have an item later on in the evening called Recognition of Service, and I will just go around to each alderman, and you can thank your constituents or whatever you want to say at that time, and that'll be right after call will be awards, then we'll recess, and then at 7:30, the new council, I will hand the gavel off to Daniel Biss. So that concludes my announcements. City Manager Storey, do we have any city manager announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hagerty. I'm going to ask Paul Palop, our fire chief, to introduce a new motion among our fire department staff.
Good evening, council members, city clerk, Mayor Hagerty, city manager Storey. My name is Paul Palop, Chief of Evanston Fire Department, and I'm happy to announce our new promotion to Deputy Chief Keith William Munro, sitting next to me, goes by Bill. Bill's been with our department for 34 years, an active member, selflessly serving this department. It's, it's a proud honor. He's been a, he's rose to the ranks of captain, battalion chief, now our new deputy chief. He will be in charge of our operations, overseeing just the way we operate and do business on a daily basis. In fact, Chief Munro was one of the first captains that comes in our 603 Orienton Bank Building. He was one of the first captains at 808 Judson, some of the bigger fires in this town. Very experienced, lot of knowledge, super proud to have him, and he's going to put Evanston Fire Department on the map with some really good things. So I'll turn it over to Chief Munro for a few words.
Thank you, chief. I'd like to thank the chief for believing in me and with my experience. I hope we can definitely move the department even further with our experience and our knowledge base and definitely become more involved with the community programs that are out there and continue to just do a great job as the department that has always been, in my opinion. So I look forward to meeting a lot of the members of the council and the city staff, and I'm always here, so, thank you.
Thank you, chief, thank you, deputy chief, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, city manager. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any clerk announcements tonight?
We have no announcements, Mayor Hagerty.
All right, then I need just one second because I'm just looking at the sign-in All right, thank, thank you for that. Normally, I don't have to do that, but we had several names repeated on here, so I wanted to make sure we got this right. We have 18 residents that have signed up for public comment. I'm going to give everybody, I think I did this math right, I did it really quick, two minutes, that would give everybody two minutes and 30 seconds for public, for public comment tonight. So we'll go ahead, and as everybody knows, we set aside 45 minutes for public comment, so I just divided that by 18, got the two minutes and 30 seconds, and I will time it, and if we reach your time, I'm going to ask you to close so we can move to the next speaker. First up, we've got Carl Klein tonight, then Paul Klitsky, then Karen Courtwright. Welcome, Carl. Do we have Carl with us?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, welcome, Carl, you're on.
All right, so I have one question. What is going on? The agenda for the outgoing city council meeting is jam-packed with important matters concerning the residents of Evanston, literally only a couple hours before the swearing in of the incoming new city council. I strongly believe that Rules Committee must have a discussion on enacting and codifying that the lame-duck session of a city council may only include voting on the bills and payroll until the new city council is sworn in. As city, as council member Fleming correctly said, anything else feeds the perception that we are cramming stuff in in order to negate voter choice of representation. It would be best to move up the date of swearing in so there is not an awkward lame-duck period. Thank you, council member, for making a recommendation to the Rules Committee, and I too have concerns about the amount of business before the lame-duck council tonight, and that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Carl, that's a good suggestion, thank you. Next up, we've got Paul Klitsky, then Karen Courtwright, then Ben Klitsky. Welcome, Paul.
Hi, good afternoon, city council members, Mayor Hagerty, city council, or city manager Storey. Okay, so good afternoon, I'm actually Ben Klitsky, Paul is unable to be here with us right now, and, you know, I want to, you know, respectfully, second to what we just heard, you know, respectfully questioning the legality of the 80th City Council to vote on consent agenda items as the election results of the 81st City Council were certified two weeks ago on April 27th. If you choose to proceed today, I ask the city council to vote no on amended 19021. This is the proposed total ban of leaf blowers. In our estimation, this is an overly broad and unjustified ordinance or amendment to an ordinance. Nature's Perspective Landscaping, where I'm a maintenance manager, has spent over $30,000 retrofitting our equipment to be electric, battery-powered, propane-powered, and now the city is abruptly looking to change the rules, we, after we made this investment. The Climate Action Resilience Plan called for a phased approach with a timeline, not an overnight ban. Amending ordinance 19021 will have real consequences for our business. Removing blowers, in our estimation, adds 40 to 50% more time spent doing the work. This work has already been contracted. When we write our contracts, we build them for the machines that we know are available to use. In addition to restricting the hour, in addition, this ordinance looks to restrict the hours of blower usage. We estimate that by changing the amount of time that we're able to use blowers, we would be able to service 180 fewer accounts. We estimate this lost revenue from these 180 lost accounts would amount to around This is real money. This lost revenue would translate into potentially having to lay off six to eight employees, which would be around 15 to 20% of our current workforce. These are the true unintended consequences of passing an abrupt ban. We ask the council people to vote no on amended 19021. Thank, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ben, for that. Karen Courtwright's next, then Diane Goldring, then Mike Vasilko.
Mayor, I'm not sure Karen is on.
Karen with us? No, okay, we'll come back to her at the end if she joins. How about Diane Goldring, then Mike Vasilko, then Leslie Shad?
Diane has to be removed.
I guess she's off, okay. What about, we'll go to Mike Vasilko.
Thank you. I want to echo what the previous speaker said about tonight's, this 4:30 council meeting because the way this article reads in the Evanston Patch, for all practical purposes, this is an illegitimate meeting. I think the way this reads, the intent of the law, the state law, is that the council that was elected recently is the council that should be meeting today and should be conducting business, not, not what appears to be the existing council just not being able to let go, not being able to turn the business of the city over to a legitimate council until after the fact, until after votes are taken. It's just, it's an unfortunate stain, I think, on those who are leaving the council, and actually on some who are remaining on the council because they should just leave and protest and, you know, ask that the law, once in a while, be followed in Evanston. I'm confused why there is a consent agenda. There was no Administration of Public Works Committee meeting, so why is APW on a consent agenda? That shouldn't be approved by anybody on this council. I also want to object again to SP 7, which is going to be jammed through by, again, illegitimate meeting and illegitimate council to hand over a building to a group that's going to have people staying there. They're going to be living in this building at the cost of the taxpayers. And I really have to, to make comments. I mean, I know our mayor, current mayor, wants to keep leaving the Friends of Robert Crown's flag and handing in the keys to the city, but you can't, you can't just underestimate how much misinformation they put forward to the, to the citizens of Evanston, how many times they lied to the citizens of Evanston about the Robert Crown facility, the cost of it, the fact that they're using, again, cancer-causing material that nobody on this council wants to deal with. That's okay. When the lawsuits come, come in, we'll know where to find you. So that's a real shame that you diminish the keys to the city to those who deserve it and you give it to a group that basically is, has lied their way through this entire episode. Lastly, there's other people who are going to be talking about the new, the new alderman, the new city clerk, and the new mayor. I want to talk just momentarily about somebody who wasn't challenged in the last election, Alderman Fleming, who deserves credit for not being challenged. She was not challenged because she has the respect of her constituents, and likewise, she respects her constituents. So I just, I think, because there's going to be a lot of accolades with everybody else, Alderman Fleming deserves, you know, a huge round of applause for the way she treats her constituents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Next up, we've got Leslie Shad, then Jeremy Binata, then Tina Payton. Welcome, Leslie.
Hi, I sent in an email, so I'm just going to pass on, on in-person comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. All right, do we have Jeremy with us? There he is, all right, welcome, Jeremy.
Thank you. So I'm going to echo what everyone else has said before about the outgoing city council should be outgoing. New city council members were validated a couple weeks ago, and there's no reason why they shouldn't be sworn in at the beginning of this meeting and then take over. It's also disheartening to have so many people stand up and, and take this stance, and then what inevitably will happen is the outgoing city council will vote on all these important matters, our voices will not be heard. In a, in a small town like Evanston, that should not be the case. I also emailed everyone on city council several weeks ago about the water rates. That's nine people on city council that I emailed. I got, I heard back from Alderman Wynn and Alderman Fleming, thank you for your responses. And then I also emailed Erica Storey about Chief Cook and the $130,000 that we have spent on his Snapchat fiasco where he was posting mug shots. I have not heard back, and I would like to know what actions have been taken to ensure that that doesn't happen either with Chief Cook or with anyone else with, for whom we need to step in and pay for their, where they don't understand how to use social media,
Thank, thank you, Jeremy, for that. Next up, we've got Tina Payton, then Priscilla Giles, then Carla Sutton.
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can, welcome, Tina.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I agree that APW items should not be heard since the meeting was canceled, and they're very important items, and they should not be heard this evening and should be continued to the next meeting, but I still will make my comment. Attention, all Black people, especially 5th Ward residents, you better stand up and take action now. You are being tricked again by city council and the city of Evanston. You have been distracted by the shiny object called reparations. While you are thinking that you are getting a new house, repairing your house, or paying down your mortgage with reparations money, the city is creeping around the corner to take your property. Agenda A 7, Proposed Tiff for the 5th Ward, states on page 21 of 84 that they plan on using eminent domain to take the last remaining Black-owned and/or low-income housing property in the 5th Ward. I am a witness to this practice because they, the city of Evanston took my Black neighbors in the 90s and continues to harass my family to this date in order to acquire our property. If the council moves forwards with this presentation as it stands, then you are supporting the redlining practices that reparations is supposed to cure. Black people, pack your bags or stand up for your families if you want to stay in this community. Black lives matter. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Tina. Next up, we've got Priscilla Giles, then Carla Sutton, then Renee Payton. Do we have Priscilla, Ms. Giles?
Mayor, she's online, but she's not muting.
Okay, thank you.
There she is.
Oh, there she is.
Okay. Each new council promises in their swearing-in that they represent their constituents. Now I see a new tiff which wipes out the very people who voted them in. This tiff is not representative of the people who live there, but the people, it seems, who benefit from the developers. It seems the pandemic has been given a rush, a rushed opportunity for the council to make their own personal agenda. There has been, there's been a rush to do everything that has happened so far. There is no plan to maintain and sustain the city's residents or the greenery that Evanston base so richly boasts. It seems that we are in for another, another one of our last-generation fiascos. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. Next up, we've got Carla Sutton, Renee Payton, then Jamie Robyn Collier.
Mayor, I don't believe Mr. Sutton's online.
All right, how about Renee? How about Renee Payton?
Good evening, everyone. I am calling to talk about A 7. I agree with everything my sister said because I lived it too. Eminent domain is, whenever it's used, it's often used to kick out minorities, to kick them out of town. That's what happened to my neighborhood in the 2nd Ward. Now it looks like the remaining black 5th Ward residents will be eliminated, and the popular, black population will continue to drop from Evanston as the supposed reparations housing program pretends to increase black population. No new developments have ever increased the population of black people, and I don't believe that eminent domain is something that should be included in this. We are not trying to help people. We're trying to push people out. That's what it looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. All right. Next up, we've got Jamie Robyn Collier, then Linda Dalbosk, then Alex Elliott. Welcome, Jamie.
Council members, while I think the goals of this new TIF are admirable, I ask that you not take action tonight for the following reasons. One is I would not want the creation of the TIF to be tainted by the questionable legality of this council meeting. Second, the consultant's report estimates total cost at $89 million in that the property values would increase from about $35 million to as much as $100 million. But the report does not include a projection of how, over 23 years, the increase in property value will have an incremental impact on tax collection. An issue is whether the TIF will be able to fund the improvements, and if not, then the property taxpayers will have to bear the burden for these incremental costs. And third, prior discussion of this TIF proposed the sale and privatization of the Civic Center to increase the tax revenue. However admirable this is, there appears to be a lot of sentiment to retain the Civic Center as is, and before that decision should be made, there should be a report on how the Civic Center could be made carbon neutral, which I understand is in process but has not yet been reported, and what would be the cost of relocation to allow a, an appropriate discourse about what's the right course of action. And thus, having a public meeting to discuss this TIF in June without having this report or the alternatives available leads to an unhealthy discussion of the topic. So if there is not a unanimous vote to suspend the rules, then A 7 would be simply introduced to this council, and the next council can deal with it and address these open issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Next up, we've got Linda Dalbosk, then Alex Elliott, then Tricia Conley.
Mayor, I don't believe Linda's online.
All right. Then we'll move to Alex. Welcome, Alex.
Thank you. So I'm Alexandria Elliott, 3rd Ward, supporting Agenda Item P 7, Ordinance 19021, the amendment to the city of Evanston's leaf blower policy. And I've spoken about this before. I support this ordinance, and I strongly feel it doesn't go far enough. And also, I have asked our landscaping company not to use a leaf blower. I pay the same fee, I leave the leaves, I save them time, gas, and money. Leaf blowers, both gas and electric, are an eco-disaster, contributing to mass insect die-off and rapidly declining numbers of birds because they blast insects, soil biodiversity, and habitats at speeds of up to 200 miles an hour. They're drying out the soil, which harms our urban canopy, and they're destroying our pollinator habitats. Pollinators, that's one of the five crucial jobs that National Geographic noted about insects, the insects that we are losing. They're also providers, since they're near, in nearly every food chain. They're decomposers, pest controllers, soil engineers. They keep the world going, essentially. And in terms of air pollution, leaf blowers account for 90% of fine particulate matter emissions from lawn equipment. So that includes animal feces, fertilizers, heavy metals, pesticides, anything gross that is on the sidewalk and on the ground goes into the air, it will get into your lungs, it will never leave the body, and it remains suspended in the air, sometimes for up to a week, for everyone walking around to encounter. And even that short-term exposure can increase your risk of asthma, cancer, heart failure, dementia, and more. In terms of noise, leaf blowers are literally deafening the people who use them because their noise can reach 115 decibels, and we know that 85 is when permanent hearing loss can occur. And researchers concluded in February that songbirds' reproductive success is ultimately diminished by noise. So people are not the only ones suffering from the noise. You know, gas leaf blowers in particular are accelerating climate change because of their two-stroke engines. Those are the ones that don't have that catalytic converter to reduce toxic gases like your cars do, and they also have pollutants that create ground-level ozone, which is the major component of smog and a known risk factor for cardiovascular disease. So leaf blowers are decimating our insect numbers, they're hastening climate change, they are literally shortening our lives. I do not understand what could possibly justify their usage at this point, and I hope that someday we'll look back at them kind of like we do at cigarettes in restaurants these days. I strongly support this ordinance, and I hope that you will vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Next up, we've got Tricia Conley, then we have Doreen Price, and then Ray Friedman. Welcome, Tricia.
Welcome. Thank you. I'm Tricia Conley. I live in the 4th Ward. Mayor Hagerty, council member, city clerk. Let us not forget the words spoken over and over by many on the 80th Evanston City Council. If you don't like it, run! I'd like to thank those people who took up the call and ran for the 81st City Council this year. In my 21 years of living in Evanston, I've not witnessed the willingness and dedication of people to speak to the issues before us in a way that has been different from ever before. I appreciate the interactions and dialogue that flowed through our city around many important issues. The word progressive has been thrown around quite a bit. I'm concerned that it has gone by the way of the word equity and may be a tool used as a smokescreen rather than to stand up against old guard of Evanston and the power structures that continue to want to have a front-row seat at the table on decisions that impact residents. The ways of power in the last four years are still with us tonight, as the soon-to-be former city council headed up by almost former Mayor Steve Hagerty is making a claim that they control business to be voted on tonight. There is a state statute and lawyers well acquainted with the law that tell us otherwise. If you're right now thinking, well, we've done it this way in the past, I mean, so, well, let's face it, just because we've done it this way in the past does not mean that is a good thing. This thinking is not progressive, nor is it equitable. Check yourselves. When we have things that will be voted on, like a change on how ethics are handled by a council with numerous ethics complaints, not to mention the recent election and Evanston Together antics, with no real pushback from electives that were being promoted by this smear campaign, that's hypocrisy at its finest. When we have things being voted on, like selling the North Branch Library, but no information on how this is a real financial benefit that's going to ensure a new library in the 5th Ward, I have little faith. When we have the bookhouse being voted on with a 40-year lease, with no real clear understanding how the hundreds of people who came out to offer insights and generate ideas for a welcoming public space on the lake, I question that. Well, onward. Thanks for your service. May we move ahead and take actions that really speak to equity, accountability, transparency, and, yes, progressive values. Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Next up, we've got Doreen Price, and then Ray Friedman.
Mayor, I don't believe Doreen is online.
All right. Then, Ray, you're off.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have a two-page letter that I have written very carefully, as I have done for the past, like, four and a half years. After listening to everybody who spoke before me, especially the first speaker, Carl Klein, and Trish, who just spoke, I have to say I agree with them 110%. After reading the article in Evanston, Evanston Patch, sorry, it says that the legalities of tonight's council meeting, it's just illegal. So you shouldn't be having a city council meeting tonight. You should have a swearing-in ceremony. The letter that I wrote, the two-page letter, is for the new city council. So I would strongly suggest that you skip the city council meeting for tonight, listen to all the speakers who have spoken before me, okay? Do the swearing-in ceremony, have your city council meeting swear, swearing ceremony at 7:30 as you proposed it to be, and all these items, these dozens of items that you have up for, for discussion or, you know, for action for tonight, it sounds to me like it's illegal. So I do wish everybody the best of, as I have in the past, all the outgoing, the mayor and, and all the aldermen, I wish you all the best. Thank you for your service. We need to have accountability, like Trish said, you know, like I've said, we need to have discussion with the residents on each and every one of the items that are up on the agenda for action or discussion, needs to be discussed with all the residents first before it comes to city council. This is not a good way to end anybody's tenure at city council. Like I said, thank you for your service, and I wish you all the best, but let's end it on a good note, and a legal note, okay? Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank, thank you, Ray. All right. Luke, that completes the list that I had. Is there anyone else that I should have called on?
I believe that does, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank, thank you. And thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Mayor Hagerty? Mayor Hagerty?
Yes, Ray.
Mayor Hagerty? One more. I just wanted to thank Luke Stowe. Since you mentioned his name, I wanted to thank Luke Stowe for fixing the glitch I had mentioned last council meeting that I wasn't getting the notices. And apparently Luke sent out a couple emails and found a glitch in the system, and I guess it was corrected, and so now I've gotten, I guess for two months, we weren't getting notices. So thank you to Luke Stowe.
Good. Thank you, Ray, for mentioning that, and thank you, Luke, and all our city staff for what we're doing to try and make sure things work okay. All right. We're now going to turn to the consent agenda of the city council. I am going to ask if aldermen would take a minute, look at the agenda, and let me know which items you would like to remove from the agenda. Again, my suggestion, because we have an item later on in our agenda, recognition of service, that we leave on the consent agenda, all of these resolutions for each of the aldermen, and we'll have an opportunity at, during recognition of service, to thank our constituents and others. I will stop there and give people a minute to identify items they would like to remove from the consent agenda.
P 1, please, and, and P 7.
P 1 and P 7 are off.
A 7 and R 1.
A 7 and R 1 are off. Yes, Mr., yes, Mr. Conley.
Just wanted to point out that if there's anything that's on here for intro and action, it probably needs to come off.
Would you repeat that?
Things that are on for introduction and action.
Oh.
In the past, what we have done, I think, is we've left them on, and then we moved a motion before voting on the consent agenda to, on those particular items, to allow, suspend the rules, allow for introduction and action, and then took a vote on that.
It's already been taken off, I think, the one that is.
I think that's the only one.
Was that the only one? Okay.
That's what I, yeah.
There's two. Is A 7 on? A 7.
A 7 is off. What are the two aldermen rating?
A 7 and A 8 are introduction and action.
All right. So we can take A 8 off to handle that. Okay?
And just to clarify, all of the special orders of business are on, are being moved on the consent agenda, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And P 2 was tabled in committee.
All right. So P 2 stayed in committee. All right. So right now, the ones that are off are A 7, A 8, P 1, P 7, and R 1. I'll give you one more minute if there's anything else people want off.
What's P 1? I literally just lost my page.
P 1 is the U 2 zoning district for that Northwestern. So that is.
That's that figure. Okay.
All right. Does people need any more time?
Uh-uh.
Okay. I don't see that. Alderman Suffertin, would you move the consent agenda then, less those items?
Sure. I move the consent agenda absent items A 7, A 8, P 1, P 7, and R 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Deputy Clerk, could you please take the role on the consent agenda?
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
Aye.
Alderman, um, Revel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
And Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
All right. So on a nine to zero vote, and we do have all of our aldermen here, Alderman Fleming's been, or Alderwoman Fleming's been with us for a while. The consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on the nine to zero vote. We're now going to go to the items that were removed from the consent agenda. Alderman Suffertin, could you move A 7?
I move item A 7, which is Ordinance 19021, approving meeting dates for the 24th meeting in public hearings for the proposed 5th TIF. District Redevelopment Plan and Project, Alderman Simmons requests suspension of rules for introduction and action.
There is a.
Second.
Second.
All right. This item is open for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. I do have, I would like to have Paul or Nick respond to the statements that I'm sure would be alarming regarding a further plunder of black housing due to this proposed TIF. As staff is preparing to make comments, I just want to remind or inform those that aren't aware that this has been a long-term goal, a multi-term goal, in fact, initially visioned by Alderman Homes, and now we are in an opportunity and a space where we can advance this TIF that would support development and increment in historically underserved advance this TIF that would support development and increment in historically underserved and currently underserved and underdeveloped neighborhoods in the ward. So if Paul or Nick could speak specifically to the accusation of intent to take black homes and any sort of language that may be confusing to the reader, I would appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, may I say a few words?
Yes, welcome, Paul.
Thank you. Members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to once again speak about what I think is one of the more important economic development initiatives that you're considering and, you know, frankly, what the next city council will be considering as well, because ultimately, they will have the final approval of this. First of all, I want to make sure that we understand what we're looking at this evening. The irony here is that we are seeking authority to establish two public meetings, the Joint Review Board, which is the body that represents all of the taxing entities in the city of Evanston, including the two school districts and the city. That meeting is open to the public and it's important that the public attends, and we invite the public to every meeting, and we include the media, so these are covered, covered by the local media, it's attended by the city council members, and also other members of elected bodies representing tax groups. So let's be clear about that, that's a JRB meeting. Secondly, we are requesting the establishment of the public hearing where we will have an open session in the middle of the city council meeting where anybody can weigh in and express their concerns to help influence a really good TIF plan for this area. So that's what we're talking about tonight. We're not establishing a TIF, we're not adopting a plan, and we're certainly not adopting a plan that incorporates eminent domain. That is certifiably false. This, the information in this document simply repeats state of Illinois required information that goes into a redevelopment plan. And what it says in this document is that the city may, you know, consider acquiring property through a number of means, including purchasing or eminent domain. The city of Evanston has the right to do that with or without a TIF. That is not, that, this TIF plan is not giving us some special authority to acquire black-owned property to expand or whatever the accusations were, I don't even want to repeat them because they were so false. But what I would like to do is just focus on what this plan does, and there will be many opportunities to have public discussion about. I will say that if at any point the future council use, if this TIF is approved and this future city council suggests to the staff that they want to use eminent domain to acquire black-owned property or any property, you can't do that with this plan because we have specifically stated in the plan that we would be required to do a housing impact study. We have committed in this plan that we will not acquire residential property for redevelopment without further amendment of the plan. So if I could speak more positively about the plan, the plan is intended to be a financial tool to help build new affordable housing, to renovate housing. We can use 50% of, or sorry, TIF can be used to cover 50% of the cost of the construction of new affordable housing. This is a more recent addition to the TIF law. This is intended to support renovation and the construction of new affordable housing, and if the civic center at some date in the future, that has not been decided, but someday if a multi-acre beautiful property is decided to be put on the market for sale, we could use TIF to help motivate the construction of new affordable housing. That is what this is about. This is not about building high-rises, or this is not about acquiring black property to gentrify the neighborhood. That has never been the intent. So I'm sorry to be so passionate about it, I just wanted you to know what the intent of this plan is. I was very shocked to hear what we heard in public comment. I believe I have, and I want to say two more things. One, it could also be used for job training, which is part of the plan. It's also thought that we would improve the water infrastructure and sewer, is what we do on all of our TIFs. We have never used eminent domain in our TIFs, and I would say that there's one, oh, the viaduct at Green Bay, Emerson and Ridge, this TIF includes that viaduct, and that has been a thorn in the community side, and we could use TIF to help improve the appearance of that. So I'll stop there and ask if there are any questions.
Thank you, Paul.
And Mayor Hagerty, members of the city council, City Manager Storey, I'll just say, as long as I'm the corporation counsel for the city of Evanston, I really have no intention unless it's an absolute last resort of suing any community member to take their property. I mean, that's just an awesome power of the municipality, and that's not something that I'm, you know, at the ready to try and exercise, whether it's for economic development or for some other purpose. I mean, we would have to absolutely, absolutely have to do it.
All right, thank you, thank you, Nick. Councilmember Sufferton?
Paul, if you don't mind, since you just opened that door, can you talk about the viaduct and using TIF funds to make that area better? Can you talk about painting the actual structure or further improvement in terms of lighting, painting, art?
Councilmember Sufferton, I had a little bit of a hard time hearing you, but I think you said, is it more than just painting the structure, including, can it include lighting and?
Yeah, are you talking about using TIF funds to paint the structure? We went through this maybe a year ago, where it's not ours.
Right. I understand. I, we're not, I am mentioning that that is something that could, that would be a TIF eligible cost, improving infrastructure. So whether that's lighting, maybe, you know, I assume that the engineering, you know, the base of the viaduct is fine, but technically, yes, you could paint it. I'm not saying that that's what we're doing and that's not what we're proposing, but that would be an eligible cost, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not understanding if you don't want to do that, or if you're just, if you're just wondering, but that is just technically, it is an eligible expense.
No, you just, you mentioned the viaduct and we had explored ways to make it better about a year ago, and we landed on it belongs to the railroad and they didn't want us to paint it. But I look forward to working with you on this beautification process. This ditch is fantastic. I'm really glad we have that there. Money well spent.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman, Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you. I just had a quick question since there was confusion. Is this how the TIFs usually go? I know there's a very public piece, but I assume that there's already been some community meetings talking about it, so just trying to get clarity on where the misinformation might be coming from.
Sure. I would ask Alderman Rue Simmons to describe the process she's hosted today, and I could fill in the blanks.
Absolutely. So this is very early stage, but necessary to advance and present to the future city council what our options are as a city. There are dozens of meetings, probably at least a half dozen actually remaining, but we have already had a ward meeting to introduce, to discuss this as an opportunity for development and increment in our ward. I don't remember, I guess it was about several weeks ago, we had that meeting, Paul was there and gave a presentation to the community, there was feedback given. I think what's most important is that this is a necessity for us to understand what our options are. This is not in action, we're a ways away from that. To suggest that it is with intent to strip away wealth is just a really reckless public comment to make because it absolutely is not intended to do that. Obviously, we have a commitment to the black community, we've just made that. So any further intentional confusion, which seems to be the theme lately, like let's just confuse the information to, for whatever reason, but this is absolutely something that has the support of the community through community process, community engagement, and has an opportunity to help us reach the goals that we all talk about, improving affordable housing, improving our infrastructure, looking at ways to improve and expand workforce development opportunities. So we have had some process, the appropriate amount of process to date. The next series of meetings will happen once the report is back, and it will be robust community engagement, robust committee conversation, staff conversation, as well as multiple meetings at city council before there, at a future city council, the 81st city council, before there is any action taken. So I do hope that we're able to support just a next step. Again, this is not a final action.
So can I, for clarity, and maybe this comes because Chicago has a lot of TIFs that have had some issues. I don't know if we have it on our website somewhere, Paul, but maybe it's worth explaining online or through a newsletter or something, through economic development, what a TIF is and kind of what the steps are. And so therefore, at least we have it up, we have many TIFs, and I know several, I think we started before I got here, but even I remember coming in and people had questions about the TIF on Howard Street, so maybe just for the sake of repurposing, it makes sense to have something on the website, what a TIF is and what the kind of legal steps are that we have to take so that people can have that clarity. Whether they read it or not, but we could at least put it up there.
Sure, I'd be glad to do that.
All right, Alder, Councilmember Rainey?
I prefer Alder Person, however, I believe, and I go way back, as you know, but the Payden family did have issues with one of our very first TIFs, and I think Tina is going way back to the research park where there were issues with eminent domain. And I can tell you nationwide that the third rail of TIFs is to screech eminent domain. An eminent domain will derail opportunities for a really good productive discretion on a TIF. I mean, it just throws it right off track. And I believe Tina knows full well that this is not going to be an eminent domain issue, and either Tom or someone, Paul, knows, I believe, that in order to do eminent domain in a tax increment financing district, I believe you have to get the legislature's approval. I believe. I don't think you can just, I don't think a community that is establishing a TIF or a TIF review board can determine that there's going to be eminent domain. I don't think that that, it can happen like that. I think the legislature has, and I know the legislature hates eminent domain. So I think even to make any referrals to eminent domain in any Evanston TIF is just absolutely ridiculous, and I believe that the Payden family knows better at this point. So I really think that that, that should be a word, a phrase we don't use for this TIF. It's just an unfortunate and very, it's a very negative thing, and it has nothing to do with this tax increment financing district. And I certainly hope the new council knows enough to go forward with this.
Thank you, Alder Person Rainey? All right, any other comments or questions on this item? If there isn't, then I'm going to ask Alder, excuse me, Councilmember Rue Simmons if she would, well, this was, excuse me, if she would like to move a motion to suspend the rules to allow this to be for introduction in action this evening?
Move suspension of the rules for introduction in action, item ordinance 52-021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, seeing no discussion, Deputy Clerk Gomez, could you please take the role on that motion?
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Alderman Revel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
And Alderman Winn?
Aye.
All right, thank you, thank you, Deputy Clerk. The motion to suspend the rules to allow this to be for introduction in action this evening passes the city council on a nine to zero vote. The original motion was moved and was seconded, so Deputy Clerk Gomez, could you please take the role on item A7, ordinance 52-0-21?
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainey?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisk?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
And Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
All right, so on a nine to zero vote, item A7, ordinance 52-0-21, approving meeting dates for the joint review board meeting and public hearing for the proposed five-fifths TIF district redevelopment plan and project passes for introduction in action this evening. Alderman Sufferton, could you please move A8?
Sure, I move item A8, which is ordinance 55-021, and then title 10, chapter 11, section 18, schedule 18, senior residents only, district staff recommended council adoption of this ordinance, amending those sections to amend parking restrictions that were individually left out of ordinance 27-021, adopted on April 26, 2021. Ordinance 27-021, amend parking on the east side of Sheridan Square from Garden Court to Sheridan Road to allow for three-hour parking from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Ordinance 55-021, amend parking on the same portion of the west side, Sheridan Square to allow for artist who parking only. Discussions at the April 12 and 26 in council meetings as well as memorandum that accompanied ordinance 27-021. Amendments to both sides of Sheridan Square, ordinance 55-021, bring Sheridan Square in line with the plans that were requested and discussed. This is for introduction in action.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All right, so we've got a second to that. This item then is open for any questions or comments. Seeing none, Alder, excuse me, Councilmember Winn, could you move a motion to suspend the rules to allow for introduction in action?
Yes, I moved that we suspend the rules for introduction in action, ordinance 55-021.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Seeing no questions or conversation, Deputy Clerk Gomez, could you please take the role on the motion to suspend the rules and allow item A8 to be for introduction in action?
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainey?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisk?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
All right, thank you. On a nine to zero vote, the Evanston City Council passed a motion to suspend the rules and allow for introduction in action for item A8. Item A8, which was ordinance 55-0-21, was moved and seconded. Deputy City Clerk, could you please take the role?
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainey?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisk?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
And Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Clerk. Uh, item A eight, ordinance fifty-five dash zero dash twenty-one, amending title ten, chapter eleven, section eighteen, schedule eighteen, uh, P residence only parking district passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote, and that was for introduction in action this evening. Uh, we're now going to move to the next item that was removed, uh, which was item P one. Um, Councilmember Fisk, could you please move that item?
Uh, yes. Um, P one is ordinance fifty-three oh twenty-one, amending portions of the city code to extend the expiration date of permitted uses within the U two zoning district. I move introduction.
Second.
All right. This now is open for questions, comments, concerns. Uh, Alder, uh, excuse me, Councilmember Revelle?
Um, I asked to have it taken off the consent agenda because I continue to urge my colleagues to recognize that this is a, um, set it, would set a poor precedent, and I encourage everyone to vote no.
All right. Thank, thank, thank you, Councilmember Revelle. Uh, Councilmember Fleming?
Um, I, I assume the answer is no, but, um, have you all had any more conversations with Northwestern about the senior awards since we adopted this, what, last year or year before, whenever we adopted it last, and then we, obviously, they didn't have events due to COVID?
Uh, we've not talked about it at award meeting, but I certainly continue to hear from residents once it, uh, surfaced again as an, as an item to come on our agenda. So there's still a very strong, uh, concern in the neighborhoods around the U two district.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you. And I certainly understand and respect that there are, uh, very legitimate concerns, but when we passed this in first instance, it wasn't a trial basis, um, uh, and of course, COVID has eliminated the opportunity for the trial basis. So, uh, I think it's just, I think it's, it's just very reasonable to, uh, give a little bit of an extension here to do, to see how it works out. If it doesn't work out, then it doesn't work out. But if it does, I think it could be, um, potentially beneficial thing that, uh, that they're doing so as far as generating revenue and, um, you know, taking some of the activities that always would happen in the neighborhood, out of the neighborhood and into the facilities.
Thank you. Any other comment or questions? Seeing none, uh, Deputy City Clerk, could you please take the role on P one, which is for introduction?
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
No.
Councilmember Rainey?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisk?
You're muted, Alderman, or Councilmember Fisk, you're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
No.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Clerk. On a six to three vote, um, ordinance, or item P one, ordinance fifty-three dash zero dash twenty-one, amending portion of the city code to extend the expiration date of permitted uses within the U two zoning district, passes the, uh, the Evanston City Council on a six to three vote for introduction. All right. Thank you for that. Uh, Councilmember Fisk, could you move P seven?
Yes. Uh, P seven is ordinance nineteen oh twenty-one, amending the city Evanston's leaf blower policy, uh, and that is for action. I move approval.
Second.
All right. This item's now open for conversation, questions, concerns. Uh, Councilmember Revelle?
Uh, yes. Well, I'd like to first acknowledge the, um, comments made by, uh, at least one resident this evening and at our previous meeting, but, and strong support for, um, further regulations of leaf blowers in Evanston, but I don't believe that, uh, the ordinance as it's currently drafted is ready for our adoption. So just to review, as adopted, it would regulate the use of all types of leaf blowers, gas-powered, propane-powered, and electric, not just gas-powered leaf blowers, which is what our ordinance currently covers. It would shorten the hours when leaf blowers can be used, eliminating morning hours on weekends and shortening the hours on weekday afternoons. And it would go into, most importantly, it would go into effect immediately, regulating the use of leaf blowers for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-one growing season. Meanwhile, as we heard from, um, the, uh, Nature's Perspective, the landscaping companies have signed contracts for the season with the expectation that they could use their existing equipment and for the longer hours provided in our current ordinance. Um, and some companies, as we've also heard this evening, have already been moving away from gas-powered equipment with the expectation, for example, that electric leaf blowers would pass muster going forward, and now we're, uh, preparing to change the rules on them for that. So I think we should table this ordinance tonight and rework it, um, to address the concerns that have been raised and, um, and then bring the ordinance back and then have the cha- those changes go into effect for the twenty-twenty-two season when we would have given, uh, plenty of advance notice to the landscaping companies.
Uh, right. We, several hands up, um, Councilmember Braithwaite and Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to support, uh, Alderman Revelle's comments. Uh, Nature's Perspective has also reached out to me. I know, uh, I believe Paul Klitsky is on the environmental board. I don't know what type of outreach has been done by our staff, uh, leading into this, this, uh, this change in the ordinance, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the P and D, so my, I, I plan to vote no. I, I hope that we can slow this down a little bit and really have a, a conversation with those businesses that will be greatly impacted. Again, if we, as Alderman Revelle pointed out, if we adopt this, it goes into effect immediately, and I don't think that that's fair, uh, to our landscaping community, particularly as many, and I don't want to generalize, but we do have a lot of, uh, black and brown businesses that would be impacted, plus, uh, they're, they're customers. So I just want to slow it down a little bit and make sure we're having a discussion with those that would be mostly impacted in this, by the change. Thank you.
Ca- Councilmember Re- Revelle, I, um, just want to make sure I'm clear. Were you suggesting a hold on this item tonight or a?
A table.
Just a ta- a table, so that way, okay, got it. All right. Um,
But if you, I'm sorry, this is a point of informa- if you table it, are you going to table it to a date?
I think I'm, I think I'm supposed, I'm supposed to do that these days, right? So I was going to table it till, um, the second meeting in June. And, and if that doesn't, if we still aren't ready with it, um, but, you know, get it, get it, um, clear, get everything cleared up, um, you know, by the end of the summer, certainly. So like, you know, there'd be plenty of advance notice for the landscaping companies.
And Alderman Revelle, would it be, would you be open to waiting until after? I mean, we're already started in the season, and I think my goal would be to have as many of our larger landscape companies attend a meeting, and unfortunately, with it being right in the middle of the season, I, I think we would set ourselves up for some bad feelings if we pick a date where, for whatever reason, they're not able to attend. So my recommendation would be, we're in the season now to maybe wait until after the season, and then we'll be able to solicit their full attention.
Right. Or, you know, we could, we can touch base with them to see, you know, whether they can attend, you know, a meeting or two to, to share their concerns, but, um, certainly want to hear from them, and I know, and I've heard from the environment board, they're very, um, eager to help, um, convene those kinds of conversations.
Great. Okay. We got several hands up. We're going to go with, uh, Councilmember Wilson, then Councilmember Wynn?
Thank you. And I, I think, uh, Councilmember Braithwaite and, uh, Councilmember Revelle identified most of the issues that have been brought to my attention, so I think we have people on, I guess what I'll call both sides of the equation here that have some, um, legitimate concerns. So, uh, I, I just would suggest we try to bring it in, uh, with enough time before that fall season starts so that there's not a, you know, another scramble right before the fall, because they're allowed again in the fall. So if it comes in, um, you know, with enough time to address the use of these things, uh, you know, before that sol- fall season kicks in, that would make sense to me.
Yeah. I, I would, my, my thought was they would, it wouldn't go into effect until twenty-twenty-two, so we'd have plenty, plenty of time to get the word out and do some education, et cetera.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify if, uh, Councilmember Revelle is actually making a motion to table?
I, I was waiting, I wasn't going to do it till we had the discussion.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Which I appre- which I appreciate, Councilmember Revelle, so that way we can at least have the discussion, and then I was going to go back to her, uh, to see what, all right. So, uh, Councilmember Wynn?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, I agree with the issues that, uh, Councilmember Revelle raised, and I understand the concerns of, uh, the businesses who are being taken by surprise here, uh, but I, I, so I, I do think that we, but, but I would say that if we set a meeting date, um, with plenty of notice, I would think that the bi- the landscape business owners, um, can get there, uh, and arrange their schedule in such a way that we give them a plenty of notice and they, and we have the meeting. I don't want to, I don't think we should put it off to the fall. Um, by then, they will be already thinking about, um, next year's contracts. But I, uh, my other point is that we do have a ban on these, um, uh, during the summer, and I really want the city to enforce that ban because, um, the, the, for all of the reasons that have been stated many times, uh, by the public, uh, so eloquently, and last time by, we had a, a professor of, from Northwestern who studies the effect of sound on, on our brains, uh, you know, there are, where there are so many reasons that we're learning even more of them about why the, the negative impact, uh, of this, of these, devices that really, you know, a generation ago, we didn't use. I mean, we didn't use them, and our lawns satisfied us. So, uh, I, I do think that a critical element is we must enforce this, uh, because many, so many people are working from home, and we're going to have kids continuing to do, uh, be at home, uh, we, we have to enforce this.
You, Councilmember?
Thank you.
And, and any other, uh, we'll go to Councilmember Fleming?
Um, I think it's good to hold it. Um, I will just speak, and, and maybe this is something we have to discuss at another meeting, um, Councilmember Wynn's point about enforcing, I think that is part of the issue that people have a fr- you know, they're frustrated about is, is the lack of enforcement, and so, you know, I don't know if we want to, you know, Melissa, if you want to bring that up at a sooner meeting in the summer, because I think the enforcement piece is almost impossible as written, and so, you know, I think just to say we have to enforce it, we, we have to do more than that, because it's, the way it's written now to be enforced is really hard. So maybe we can bring, maybe that can be a referral for another meeting to discuss even before this piece here is taken care of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Um, Councilmember Fleming, I agree with you, and I think we need to, to re, to look again at, um, the ordinance, even the one that we have that, as it's written right now. And the problem is that we are trying to chase the landscapers, and, and my opinion, we should be, um, issuing the citations to the property owners, because they, they're hiring the landscapers. So, uh, I, I think the, actually, if anything, the more responsible party are the property owners, um, for hiring the, this and permitting these to be used. So we, that's, we, we need to really work harder on that side of the, the equation as well.
All right. Is there any other, uh, comments or questions before I go back to Councilmember Revelle? All right. Seeing none, Councilmember Revelle?
Okay. Well, uh, then I move to table ordinance, um, nineteen dash zero dash twenty-one, amending the city of Evanston's leaf blower policy. Uh, I move to table it to June fourteenth.
Second?
Yep.
All right. Um, Deputy City Clerk, could you please take the role, uh, to table item P seven, ordinance nineteen dash zero dash twenty-one until June fourteenth?
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rue Simmons?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainey?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisk?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Clerk. Ordinance nineteen dash zero dash twenty-one, amending the city of Evanston's leaf blower policy has, uh, been tabled on a nine to zero vote, uh, to be brought up again at the June fourteenth, twenty-twenty Evanston City Council meeting. We're now going to move to, uh, the last item that was on, off the consent agenda. Um, Councilmember Sufferton, could you, uh, move R one?
Sure. Uh, I move approval of item R one, which is, uh, twenty dash oh dash twenty-one, amending title one, chapter ten of the Evanston City Code, City of Evanston Code of Ethics and Board of Ethics, Staff Recommended City Council Adoption Ordinance twenty oh twelve, amending title one, chapter ten of the Evanston Code, City of Evanston Code of Ethics and Board of Ethics. This is for action.
Second.
All right. This item now is open for any conversation. Uh, Councilmember Fleming?
Yeah. I just wanted to see if Corporation Counsel Cummings could, um, explain where he is now, if there have been any changes since the last time this was spoken about in council.
Good evening again, uh, Mayor, Councilmembers, uh, and Deputy City Clerk Gomez. Um, you and I have had several conversations about this. I am, um, not a, not opposed to your ideas, but I just will give the council another example. I'm currently dealing with the Attorney General regarding a, uh, an issue where there was a FOIA request regarding contacts or communications between members of the council and members of the Board of Ethics. Um, and we, we wouldn't really have any sort of questionable issue, uh, of council members potentially, potentially being in contact with members of the Board of Ethics, uh, or any image of impropriety of doing so if we had a truly neutral party adjudicating these ethics complaints. And so that's, that's the position that I think, um, my department, the law department continues to have, is that it needs, in order to keep, uh, it's, it's in the best interest of the city as well as the residents, is to continue to have a neutral party as the administrative law judge, uh, be the person or the, the adjudicator of these complaints. And, and I'm certainly welcome to work with you or any members of the eighty-first city council to try and come up with another solution, but until we do, I think this is what's best for the city at this point.
So, you know, looking at, I, I spent some time looking at what Skokie does, um, and they, you know, as you know, they do have citizens. They have citizens who are, you know, properly trained and who have the best fit in terms of, um, expertise in the area, and then we could, I think, use our administrative adjudication team, who I assume would be impartial. I mean, they are paid, but hopefully, they can be impartial in making these final determinations. Um, again, I just have the same concerns with kind of taking this all away from citizens. I, I understand some issues that happened last time, but taking this all away from citizens, um, I guess, no matter who we have, there's nothing that would stop a city council member, anyone else, from calling, even if it's a, you know, an appointed attorney, you know, from contacting them. So I don't, I don't think not having citizens stops that potential problem. But I do think not having citizens, or at least not giving it a go with some citizens who are, again, are properly trained and have the right expertise, sends the right message when we talk about something that, you know, in terms of an ethic, an ethics violation or ethics charge, whether it's, you know, correct or not correct. So I might like us to go in the way of Skokie, but if there is no support for that, um, I guess I would just have to make my vote accordingly tonight.
All right. Thank, thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions or comments? All, uh, Councilmember Revelle?
Well, I guess I have a question for Councilmember Fleming. Um, so in the Skokie, um, system, you say the, the, their, their citizen board is, um, it's, it sounds like they're more than just regular citizens. They have special expertise or something, but how are they chosen?
I can look it up again, because it's not in front of me, but, um, Mr. Cummings, do you want to speak to that? You might give a better answer legally.
Sure. I, I believe I mentioned, um, at the last, at, at the end, at the reading for intro, um, Skokie is my understanding, after speaking with their corporation counsel, that two of the three, uh, members are actually lawyers, um, and then the third is a religious, uh, leader in the community. Uh, so you have trained lawyers, the adjudicators of their ethics complaints. Our last Board of Ethics had at least one lawyer on it, uh, but the way that our current system is set up is that we have a lawyer to advise them, because we don't expect is that we have a lawyer to advise them because we don't expect them to be trained lawyers. And the the administrative law judge is also a licensed attorney required to be a licensed attorney as well.
Right. Yeah. Well, I guess I'm sympathetic to Council Councilmember Fleming's interest in in maintaining some some citizen presence in the process.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
So I guess my last question, because people weren't, I mean, I've been speaking to Nick about this, if you are, excuse me, Corporation Council Cummings about this. Did you land on this one, Mr. Cummings, just because I don't want to say you thought it was easier, but it's kind of a little more streamlined? Do you are you concerned that we wouldn't be able to find attorneys or kind of more skilled citizens to be on the board? I think we only needed three. And then, as we talked about, they could use, you know, they could kind of do the meat of it and still take it to administrative adjudication for final ruling, correct?
So, yeah, we landed on this. And admittedly, this is a continuation. This is something that's been worked on among staff for a while before we actually brought it to City Council. It is it is just it is an efficient means of handling the ethics complaints. It's supported by case law. You know, it's really just a matter of to try and keep the city and the corporation from the kinds of controversy that we've had. It's not so much about eliminating citizen participation. It's more so making sure that the complaints are heard efficiently and in a way that's legally sound, and the rights of those that are respondents to the complaint are secured and adjudicated properly.
All right. Seeing seeing no other comments or questions, I'm going to ask Councilmember Fleming, do you do you want to put forward a motion to have have the council vote on or just?
Well, thank you for asking. I was trying to think through that, right? You know, now we're transitioning in a little while. I would like some more conversation around this. It seems like Alderman Revel and I are the only ones who are interested in that at this point. Oh, sorry, Councilmember. Oh, I shouldn't be calling you Councilmember Winn. That's the mayor's job. So I would I would be happy to make a motion to, you know, table to a date certain to kind of work through this a little bit more, if they were interested in doing that. I can call that motion after Councilmember Winn.
Okay, all right. That sounds that sounds good. So well, thank you. Councilmember Winn.
I am happy with this motion. I think that the what's happened with our Board of Ethics over the last four years has really not served anyone well. I clearly, we've had problems getting a quorum, which means that someone who wants to bring an ethics complaint or the person for whom the on towards whom the ethics complaint has been brought, both parties are being denied speedy resolution of that. So I that that will be eliminated by this ordinance. And I think that's really critically important, that an ethics issue be addressed appropriately and impartially and quickly, because it's not fair to the complainant and it's not fair to the respondent. I also think the concern about what you were concerned about, Councilmember Fleming, is it's called ex parte contact in the law, which is people having some contact with the adjudicating party. Our administrative law judges are all trained, and they're all lawyers. And lawyers, under the code of ethics that we all must follow, understand what ex parte contact is. I mean, occasionally, we've had this problem when with zoning board members or planning commission members or even preservation commission members, when they are contacted directly by applicants. But and, you know, that's that is something we kind of live with and train those those board members on. But I think the here with when we have an issue like this, an ethics issue, it's really critically important that we not have even the hint of ex parte contact from someone who is bringing a complaint or the respondent. And that will the likelihood of that is remote when we have an administrative and administrative adjudicator here. So I think for both of those reasons and for the other reasons that Corporation Council Cummings was talking about, we've we've tried to have citizens participate in this process, and it has not been successful. And I don't think it's been positive for anyone on all sides, including the Board of Ethics members. If I were a member of the public and asked to join our Board of Ethics, I wouldn't, because it has become so politicized. So I think that we should switch to this system because it provides a speedy resolution. It's guarantees impartiality, and and it also protects us from a number protects the city from a number of the concerns that we've had over the last four years. So I think we should move forward with this.
And I suppose I would just add, you know, if the council were to move forward tonight on on this and pass it, the next council is going to have, you know, can take a few years and see how that's working, right? And if it's saying, hey, it could work better, they could amend at that point as well.
Yeah. And, Mr. Mayor, that was my a point I was thinking of, too. I mean, I think that, you know, looking at Skokie, they might not have a quorum problem that but, you know, sooner or later, those members of that Board of Ethics are going to rotate off. And I they, just as in the past, we've had Board of Ethics members who did attend and didn't have quorum problems. But that I think we should try this system. And if we find that it doesn't satisfy us, then we can look at other systems. But the one we have right now, I think, doesn't satisfy anybody.
Our Councilmember Rue Simmons.
Thank you. And I may have missed this in the discussion, but I think it's important to clarify. In the prior Ethics Board appointments, had we not had attorneys and other specialized backgrounds? Had that not been part of their makeup?
No, several several of them were attorneys.
It's just not required by the ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Just wanted to point out that we've had that sort of professional background in the past, and still, these types of challenges remain. Right.
So to move forward, we can we can we can take a vote on on R one or Councilmember or Councilmember Fleming. If you feel if you feel strongly and Councilmember Revel does, you can move you can move a hold on this. Or we can also take the vote and people could understand that if you're voting no, it doesn't mean you're saying, I don't want an ethics board. It just means I don't want this and I'm looking for something else.
I'd like to make a motion to hold.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'd like to. I want to move to overrule that motion. We have to have an ethics. We have to have a we have to have an ethics process. What we have does not work. And I think if you could, well, I don't know if this is debatable, so I'm moving to overrule the holdover.
I'll second the motion overrule.
All right. City, or excuse me, Deputy City Clerk, could you please take the role?
So is that the is that how the code and overrule? You just need a you just need one second for the overrule?
A second to a rule and a two-thirds vote.
And then we need a two-thirds vote, so we need six of six of the members to vote. So Deputy Clerk, we're taking a vote on whether you want to your vote is, you know, aye is I want to hold, no is I want to move forward with the vote on this item.
I think we're I think we're voting on the reconsider for the overall over the over.
We vote aye, you're overruling the holdover.
All right. Excuse me. All right. Is everybody clear on that? Because I wasn't. The motion is to recon is to.
Overrule the the hold.
Overrule hold.
And who hold who held it? Just so I'm.
I still have Alderman Revel.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right. Deputy City Clerk.
Wait.
You take. Yep. Go ahead, Councilmember.
The so I want to be clear that I am. Could you could you repeat it one more time, please? Thank you.
Alderman, excuse me, councilperson Rainey moved a motion to override the hold.
Okay.
So we are taking a vote right now to over override the hold.
Okay, got it.
Which means if the vote is two-thirds to override, we then vote on the current ordinance to go with the ordinance that is before us.
Right. So aye moves it forward, no kills it.
Yes.
Fleming. All right. Deputy City Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rue Simmons.
No.
Councilmember Sufferton.
No.
Councilmember Revel.
No.
Councilmember Rainey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
No.
Councilmember Fisk.
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
Aye.
Councilmember Winn.
Aye.
All right. On a five to four vote, the override fails. So this item this item is being held.
Yes, it's being held now because the override failed, right?
Yeah. So it's being held to the I guess my question just is so it'll come up at the next meeting?
That's correct.
All right. For override. Hold failed because it needed six votes. Okay. All right. Okay, we're now we have no appointments. So that include that addresses everything that was on the consent agenda. That was removed from the consent agenda. So we've taken care of all those items. We have no appointments this evening. We're now going to move to Call of the Wards. After Call of the Wards, we're going to do recognition of service. We're around to each council member, and they're free to thank their constituents or anyone else. And when we finish that, I will ask for a motion to recess. This evening for Call of the Wards, we will start with Councilmember Wilson.
No report then.
All right. Councilmember Rue Simmons.
Thank you. Please check your email for my final newsletter. No further report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revel?
No report.
Councilmember Rainey?
No report.
It's Councilmember Fleming?
No report.
All right. Councilmember Fisk? Is Councilmember Fisk with us? I don't know where she went. All right. Councilmember Braithwaite?
This Thursday, seven o'clock, second ward meeting. Please check the calendar for details. Thank you.
All right. And Councilmember Winn?
No report.
All right. Thank you. So that concludes Call of the Wards. We're now going to move to the next item, which was recognition of service. As as I think everybody, as I know everybody up here on our virtual dais knows, we are blessed to have a really terrific staff that work for the city of Evanston in all in all capacities. As part of our virtual State of the City address this year, we did a or I should say, the city staff put together a really nice video that captures really the incredible work that this group of aldermen, now council council members have done and that our city staff have done and community organizations have done. So I'm going to ask, it's a five-minute clip, but I think it's important to see it because it pulls together just really a tremendous amount of work that this body helped accomplish over the last four years. So Luke, can we can we play that?
Hi, Evanston. I'm Mayor Steve Hagerty. Four years ago, on May eighth, two thousand and seventeen, the eightieth Evanston City Council was sworn in. I remember the excitement and pride we shared with our families that night and our collective determination to serve our community. The four years since that evening have been unlike any other. Together, we faced a global pandemic, racial inequity and injustice, a growing climate crisis, and threats to our nation's democracy. As a community, we've stepped up to address these historic generational challenges while continuing to do the day-to-day work of making Evanston a city that works for all of us. Together in the last four years, we've built a brand-new community center worthy of our investment, providing state-of-the-art preschool, library, and recreational facilities that our residents will use and enjoy for decades to come. We've made other beloved city facilities shine, including renovating the Fleetwood Jordan Community Center and updating the Levy Senior Centers Library through a partnership with the Levy Senior Center Foundation. We've created new public spaces to meet, celebrate, memorialize, and rally, spaces we can take pride in. We've made Evanston even more bike-friendly, completing the award-winning Sheridan Road and Chicago Avenue project in partnership with Northwestern University. We've established pipelines of new revenue, literally, by selling water to Niles, Morton Grove, and Lincolnwood. We've invested in critical water infrastructure, completing the massive Clearwell Nine Water Storage Reservoir. It's a project you may never see, but trust me, it's important, just to ask our four hundred thousand water customers. We've made our city more vibrant with new murals, sculptures, performances, and outdoor concerts, and the stage has been set for new attractions to come. Believe it or not, we've even began writing a new chapter for the Harley Clark Mansion. That's not fiction. We've made improvements to policing, reviewing our use of force policy, and providing all officers with body-worn cameras long before it became state law. We've marched for racial equity and social injustice, and our young people have led the way, showing that in Evanston, Black Lives Matter. We've also became the first city in the nation to allocate funding for reparations, sparking a national conversation. We've enhanced local career opportunities, employing more than two dozen residents in constructing the Robert Crown Community Center and other Bullion Andrews projects since two thousand and eighteen, and putting one point three million back into residents' pockets and our local economy. We also launched the mayor's employer advisory council, MEAC, providing our young people with pathways to sustainable careers right here in Evanston. And we continue to connect hundreds of Evanston teens with their very first jobs as part of the mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program. We've worked to maintain our socioeconomic diversity, adding fifty-eight new affordable housing units with a hundred and fifteen more under construction or approved for two thousand and twenty-one. Another twenty-eight owner-occupied and rental units were rehabbed, helping maintain decent, safe housing for low and moderate income residents. We've taken action on climate change, adopting one of the most ambitious municipal action plans of any city our size in the nation. And we became the first Illinois community to commit to one hundred percent renewable energy. Since two thousand and seventeen, we've reduced emissions by an estimated eleven percent. And since two thousand and five, we've reduced them by thirty-four percent. And most importantly, we've worked together, city staff, volunteers, faith leaders, community leaders, healthcare workers, first responders, frontline workers, businesses, to meet the needs of our community and save lives during a global pandemic. Our community's response to COVID nineteen is something we should all forever be proud of, while remembering all those that we lost. It has been four years unlike any other. I want to thank the eightieth Evanston City Council for their hard work and sacrifice, and for doing the difficult, almost thankless, work of city government. There's more work to be done. There's always more work to be done. I wish the eighty-first City Council and Mayor-elect Daniel Biss the best of luck as we continue to build our community, solve problems, provide the best of luck as we continue to build our community, solve problems, provide opportunities and inspire other cities to take bold action to meet our collective challenges. It has been my honor and privilege to serve as your mayor. Thank you and be well.
I'm tired just watching that video, all that, all that work that you've all done and our city staff and so many other people here in our community have done. You know, really, uh, it's been a privilege and a fascinating experience for me to serve as the mayor uh during this uh really um strange, uncertain, difficult four years that we've all gone through. Uh, but I so appreciate having gone through it with all of you. I've learned so much about our city, so much about uh myself, um, and uh, and so much about so many, so many of you. So uh, what I thought we would do now is uh, we will, um, I'm going to cede the floor to each, to each of you. I'm going to start with our most senior alderman. Oh, excuse me, council member, I gotta get used to this, but luckily I don't have long to get used to it. Uh, so uh, so mayor-elect Biss will come into office and I'm sure he will be council member, right, roll off his tongue. Um, but I'll start with the senior and we'll go, we'll go from there. Uh, so uh, with, with that, I'm going to cede the floor uh to council member.
Did you say Rainey?
I said Rainey.
So you, you uh blanked out. Um, well, I'm just going to say goodbye and uh, you know, I'm going to watch the next council meeting and uh wish everybody good luck. And uh, those of you who are continuing, pull down the fort. Bye.
All right, thank, thank, thank you, uh, thank you, council member, council person Rainey. And uh, for those of you that, that uh didn't know, although I think it's, it's been in the newspapers, uh, there's a senior affordable housing project going up uh on How, on Howard Street. Uh, and uh, the, the developer of that project uh has named that project after uh, you know, I'll just say Alderman Ann, Ann Rainey, who served for thirty-four years, she served, she served this city. So it was a very, very fitting tribute uh to Alderman Rainey and all that she has done for the eighth ward and for the city of Evanston. So thank, thank you for that. Uh, I don't, I, we may have lost uh council member Fisk. She would be the next, oh no, she's not the next senior, I think it's council member Winn, isn't it? But I think maybe we lost uh council member Fisk. So uh, let's go with council member Winn.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I could say so many things about every member of this council. I, I love that video. We have accomplished a lot over the last four years and it has been a four years unlike any other that I have experienced uh serving on this council. I, I want to say thank you uh for, to all of the members who are departing. Uh, Alderwoman Rainey, Alderman Wilson, uh, Alderwoman Rue Simmons, uh, and, and Alderwoman Fisk. Uh, you have all been wonderful colleagues and I have appreciated all of your hard work and contributions and uh the, our work together. Uh, I think Evanston um has really benefited from our, our ability to work together in a collegial way. And I'm looking forward to the next city council, but I will be in touch with all of you uh because uh this is a big job and we all, we all need support and help. So thank you all.
Thank, thank you, council member Winn. Uh, next up, we will, again, I don't believe we have councilwoman Fisk, so I'm going to move to council member Wilson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I want to thank my family for enabling me, enabling me to do this job. I think as everybody who's served in this capacity understands, um, that's a prerequisite. Um, I also want to thank my friends for all this work in the past twelve years. Uh, without them, I couldn't have done it uh and maintained my good humor as much as I have. So um, I'm very honored to have served as the fourth ward's representative on the Evanston's council. Um, over these years, I've had the opportunity to work with very dedicated elected officials, really talented staff, uh incredibly talented staff and uh, and some incredible community partners. We've accomplished a lot of things uh by way of infrastructure and finance, but I think more importantly, we've really taken great strides uh as far as inclusion and equity are concerned. I am going to trust the eighty-first council to keep us moving in a positive direction. I want to thank all of you and I will see you um very soon because I'm certainly not going anywhere. I'm going to be enjoying every wonderful thing that Evanston has to offer and I'm going to have more opportunities to do that on Monday nights. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank, thank you, council member Wilson, for all of your, all of your good work. Uh, next we, let's see here. Uh, um, sorry, let me, uh, we have uh council member Braithwaite, I think would be the next senior person. On the, on the virtual dais, yes, welcome.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and to all uh the members of city council this past four years have been pretty amazing, just given the obstacles that we have overcome with uh COVID and, and uh really uh tenuous time in, in our country. Um, I just want to personally thank Alderman Fisk. I know that she isn't here, but I've sent, spent ten years sitting next to her. And Judy, I hope you have an opportunity to hear this and if not, I will look forward to uh sharing with you in person just, you know, the one thing I've learned from uh Alderman Fisk is even when you disagree, uh, we have found ways to keep an open mind when it comes to listening. And so Judy, thank you very much uh for teaching me how to listen even when I disagree. Alderman Wilson, you've always been a very um steady, sound, good, soundboard. I use the word reasonable, whenever I think of you, uh, Don, I think of a man of reason and, and that is a, a characteristic that uh I, I want to continue to model. So thank you very much for being that voice of reason on our council. Next is Alderman Simmons. Um, we spent, I think about a year working together, uh prior to you joining on, on many different uh issues in town. I have yet to see anyone put as much effort into learning the role as, as you did and it is no big surprise that you have made a huge impact on our city and leading us in passing our first local reparations. And I look forward to continuing to work with you on this uh for the years to come. Uh, that leaves Alderman Rainey, who, and I've had the wonderful experience of both you serving as my alderman, as one of your residents for a period of time and working alongside you uh on our council. And I would have to say, I have such a deep, profound respect for your institutional memory and at the same time, your creativity. And I'm sure myself, Alderman Holmes, Alderman Simmons, we've learned so much from you in terms of how to use our financial tools to best help and, and represent our residents. So I will look forward to staying in touch with you and uh seeing what you will, how you will reinvent yourself to continue to serve our town. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Next up, uh, we've got um council member Fleming.
I think that, isn't Alderman Revel before me?
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, she is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Eleanor, uh, council member Revel.
A teeny bit senior, but yeah. Um, well, I'm sorry that Alderman, I can't, I, I'm going to say Alderman for tonight because um Alderman Fisk is um uh disappeared for the moment because I was going to reminisce with her about how far back she and I go because we used to live across, I used to live across the alley from her and we learned how city government works together and how to um work to, work to protect um the residential character of our neighborhood. We used to share my sole, my one hard copy of the zoning code. This was, of course, pre-internet days and we used to pass it across the alley to look things up. So um, I will, I will miss um her presence here on the council. She's always been just a really thoughtful, uh wonderful colleague, um, both before the council and on the council. Um, Don, I've truly appreciated um your thoughtful analysis on so many complex issues that we've uh had to deal with um uh these four years, uh five years actually. Um, and I, I want to say, yeah, and even when we disagree, I do understand, you know, you, your well reasoned reasons for disagreeing with me. Um, uh, and one thing I'll miss are your phone calls, that you, you pick up the phone with no particular agenda in mind, but you just pick up the phone to see, you know, how I'm doing and is any, you know, do I have anything on my mind? And that's been particularly um wonderful during this time when we haven't really been in person. Um, and if, you know, sometimes um I do have something on my mind, so I call you and you always have time to help me think through the um, the complications and the implications of one decision versus another. So I really appreciate your thoughtful uh input all these years and um, I'll miss, I'll miss that. Um, Alderman Rue Simmons, um. So your leadership, obviously, in making the reparations program happen in Evanston is just totally awesome and I won't spend any time talking about that because we could go on all night. But um, I mean, you have a really powerful voice for justice and for um making positive change. And I think you don't realize how, how your voice, the kinds of impact your voice has made in ways that you don't um probably know. Because um, I remember the first time I met you back in two thousand and fifteen. Um, it was, I was leading a workshop at uh Oaken Community College and during the discussion, um, I somehow mentioned Evanston's motto, which is to be the most livable city in America. And you pushed back rightly and said, you know, we were not, we were falling short in being a livable city for a lot of our residents. And you talked about um safety, safety issues in your, your community and the need for more jobs and economic, economic opportunity. And at the, at that time, I was president of Citizens Green in Evanston and we've been focused on just the greenhouse gas emissions piece of sustainability. And I went back to my board and I said, we need to broaden, we need to look at the other principles of sustainability, which are economic issues and social justice issues. And if you look at um what CGE does today, they have taken your, your powerful voice and um are really working on all those different aspects of sustainability. So um, I'm really looking forward to um watching you achieve even bigger, greater things um in the years to come. It's been wonderful to be on the council with you. Um, Alderman Rainey. Um, it is really difficult, as I think we all will acknowledge, to imagine city council without you. Um, I've been an Ann Rainey observer um since you were first elected back in nineteen eighty-three with my dear friend and predecessor, a seventh ward alderman, Marge Collins, because I think you both started uh serving on the council together. So I have watched you um through all these years um and the amazing transformation that you have accomplished on Howard Street is just um, just phenomenal. And I'm really so pleased that um your vision and commitment has been recognized with the naming of the Ann Rainey Apartments. I think that's, um, that's really wonderful. I look forward to seeing the plaque on the building when it's all finished. Um, but what I'm going to especially remember about you is your total mastery of the rules of the council. And um, anyone who has made a motion, only to hear Ann call out uh out of order, um, will never forget the council rule that she invoked to thwart your plans. Um, so I will never forget that you cannot hold a special order of business. So thank you very much for um, you know, you know, helping me learn uh how important those council rules were and I, I will be trying to follow in your footsteps. But we're going to really miss your phenomenal institutional memory. Um, you, you know so much about so many different aspects of the city and city government. It's um, you're going to be irreplaceable, I think. And Mr. Mayor, um, I mean, you've definitely been the right mayor for Evanston um these four years. I mean, who, who could have foreseen the, the pandemic and the, the fact that um, you know, having someone with your experience, your nine one one experience, your experience with all kinds of natural disasters would really be such a benefit to our community. Um, your steady, experienced leadership has just really been so important for Evanston. Um, I, I really appreciate in particulars, a couple of the ways you've come up with to communicate and share information um with our community. I'm thinking in particular of your um mayor uh task force weekly phone calls and um that's brought together uh leaders from the key sectors in our community, um, healthcare, education, nonprofits, business, senior living communities, mental health providers. And so they've been sharing information on a weekly basis, but I think you've really forged a network that's going to continue into the future that I think is going to be a really um important foundation for Evanston going forward. And I also, um, your video Q and A's have been wonderful. Um, you've provided an opportunity for citizens to learn about really urgent issues like um, you know, your COVID nineteen uh Q and A. But I, I especially appreciated your uh policing in Evanston Q and A's and those, um, those are still available on our uh police department website, so I, webpage. So I hope, um, I think they'll be a good resource for the community going forward. So just want to say thank you for your four years of powerful, important, steady leadership. Um, we will, um, we will miss you.
Thank you, thank you, council member Revel. Um, yeah, I never knew when I took this job either that I would uh, there would be a global pandemic or a major disaster affecting every single city around, around the country. Um, all right, now, now we'll jump back to uh, I think our final uh three is um council member Fleming.
Yeah, I would just say thank you to the folks who are leaving for their time of service, whether it was four years or much longer. As I think um, Don said, this is a tough job and our families sacrifice a lot. We sacrifice a lot, whether people, whether we agree or don't agree, whether we're friendly or not friendly. Um, I think everyone who's up here is up here because they think they have something to add to value to this city and hopefully um our citizens, I've said this before, our citizens can start to see this. You know, they either run for office or they can, or they don't run for office, but you have to at least respect the people who up here, whether you agree with them or not, are up here um out of some kind of love for the city because it's definitely not for the pay, it's not for the perks. Um, and so thank you all for your service um to the city, it is a service and hopefully um whatever your next venture is, is, is fulfilling and exciting and rewarding and it allows you more time with your family and friends.
Thank you, council member Fleming. Um, I don't know if we have council member, oh no, next up would be council member Rue Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. Um, I want to thank uh my family, my friends, my loved ones for um your patience with me as I have um given of myself to service to the city and to um the residents of the fifth ward that voted me in and allowed me this really incredible um opportunity to be our voice on the eightieth city council. Um, I have learned um so much and learned from each of my colleagues on city council something. Um, it's been just an incredible experience to work alongside a brilliant city staff that often um, you know, goes unrecognized. Um, but I just want to thank everyone um for um partnering and collaborating and pushing me and challenging me um in ways that uh helped me to um be the leader, the leader that I've been able to be. Um, I want to say a special shout out to um a couple of alderpeople, including um Alderman Revel, who um actually was my first introduction to um environmental matters. And I didn't remember that meeting at Oaken, actually. I didn't remember you there, I remember that meeting. But I do remember um being invited to learn more about CGE and that's been one of my highlights of my four years here is learning more about our environment and being able to advocate um for environmental justice in that way. And um, thank you for that, for being such a partner. And Alderman Rainey, of course, um, you know, the secret is out, I refer to her as Auntie Ann. And um, I just want to thank Ann for um the leadership that she's shown and the example and her institutional knowledge that um has been an incredible asset to us on the city council. And um, my big brother Peter Braithwaite, um, just thank you for pouring into me as I prepare to serve on city council and thank you. Um, I really enjoy partnering with you as we've served um the minority women and business community here and work towards um our goals for racial justice um together. So thank you and I continue, I look forward to continuing to work with you. And um, all. And Alderman, Winn, thank you for the invitations to coffee, unsolicited invitations to learn more about the goals on the 5th Ward and how you can help us meet them. It's been really, really appreciated. I definitely feel heard when we work together. Thank you and, and all the best to you. Alderman Wilson, like Alderman Revelle said, you know, your cause, what's going on in the ward, you know, how can I support, helping with clarity on things that, you know, I needed education on has been incredible. And Mayor Hagerty, just as it was stated before, what perfect positioning you were in, in this time in history to serve our city. It was very much comforting to know that you were in position during COVID to make sure that our city and our residents were safe and we were prepared for those emergencies. So, thank you and thank you for all the ways that you have contributed and led the city. Alderman Sufferton, I think he may have left, but I've learned a lot sitting next to Alderman Sufferton and even Alderman Fleming have really learned a lot about leadership, serving alongside Alderman Fleming. So, I just want to thank you. It's been an incredible experience and I know I've talked too long, but it's my last meeting and I'm going to take all my automatic privilege to do so. And thank you all. I did send out a newsletter giving thanks. Oh, one more thanks. All of the nonprofits and partners in town that make our work possible and helping us expand what our goals are here on city council. We can't do it without you. So, thank you to all of the staff, including our city manager, Erica Storely, and Chief Cook. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ruth Simmons. And I think you were just, just, excuse me, just right on your time. Councilmember Winn, do you have something?
Yes, I do. Mayor Hagerty, I have two things for you from the city staff, from the 80th City Council and really from the residents of Evanston. And so, the first item is, and I think you'll recognize this, is was the wrench that you used for the opening of the water supply between Evanston and Lincolnwood in August, August 13th, 2020. And this is to thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you, thank you so much. I can always use a wrench that big. Now I can start to get into.
Well, you know, that, that special gold tone, you know, try not to scratch it. So, this, this was from the city staff. This was their idea, but I, I love it and I think it's really appropriate because infrastructure really is our foundation. Now, we have one, I have one other item. And this, this is very special. And Stephen H. Hagerty, on behalf of the city staff, the residents of Evanston and the 80th City Council, your colleagues, I have been entrusted to give to you this gold gavel in honor of your service as our mayor. And I want to thank you very much, Steve. As the other members have said, you were the right man at the right time and the city of Evanston has really benefited beyond measure from your, for your, from your leadership. This will also be delivered to your home.
Oh, my gosh, thank you, thank you, Melissa. Thank, thank you, thank you, everybody. Looks like a lot of gold there. I don't know if I can melt all this down and, no, I would never do that.
This one's a little lighter, so, you know.
I appreciate that and I appreciate that, that neither the council nor the residents actually made me use my gavel very often. I think I used it once or twice in four years. That's not too bad.
Well, now this one will hang on your wall.
Perfect. Thank, thank you, thank you. And it was nice to hear everybody's reflections of their colleagues. I don't think Alderman, or Alderman Sufferton's with us. And it was nice to hear everyone's reflections and real quick, because I want to give the members that are going to be sworn in shortly, time to get ready and get over to, get over to city hall. I'm just going to do a rapid fire of my impression of, of each person. So, and I'm going to call them Alderman because that's what we were called for four years until tonight and now it's Councilmember. So, Alderman, Alderman Fisk, you are a fierce advocate for your residents. You always, you always have been and I've always been, you know, just so impressed by that. Alderman Braithwaite, I mean, I look at you and I just see courage. You're a courageous, you are a courageous person. And it's not easy being courageous in this, in this world at this moment where everybody seems to have a megaphone. And, you know, you are true to yourself and, and what you think is in the best interest of the city and I've always appreciated that about you, Peter. Alderman, Alderman, Alderman Winn, wait, do it. I always, always mess that up. I always think, listen, Alderman, Alderman Winn. I, you know, I really miss our, our breakfasts that we used to have every six, six weeks or so and then, and then, and then the pandemic, and the pandemic struck. But I've always appreciated how thoughtful you are, how prepared, how prepared you are on, on the issues here. And, and it's made, I think, just a world of difference for our city for as long as, as long as you've served. And I'm really excited to see the, the future development that goes along, along the corridor right there in your ward on Chicago Avenue, because there's a lot of exciting work that's, that's coming, that's coming up there. Alderman Wilson, I can't, as the mayor who doesn't vote on anything, but like every mayor has an opinion about some things, I don't have an opinion about everything, but I have an opinion about some things. I appreciate that, and I don't know if people in the public know this, certainly our council members know this. I mean, you're a real leader on the council. I mean, somebody who picked up the phone, called your colleagues, said, hey, what are you thinking about this issue? And, and it made a world of difference to our, to our city. You know, like Melissa, you are always, you know, thoughtful and prepared and, and measured and you struggled with the issues. And that's, that's, that's real, you know, because these, these issues that we, we deal with don't have simple answers on a lot of, a lot of this stuff. It's like, oh, that seems like a good solution. Well, that's a good solution too. Like which one is, which one's better? And you could always feel you struggling, you know, and you'd even talk about it and you'd use the words and, and everything. So, I just, I just always appreciated that, Don.
Thank you.
Alderman Ruth Simmons, I just have one, one word, bold, bold. And, and look what, look what, you know, you helped accomplish and lead here for this council. And, and we'll see how it evolves. I mean, you and I've talked about this, right, over, over time. But, you know, you got to take small steps and, and sometimes you got to take big ones and this could be a really big one and, and we'll, we'll see the size of it as time, as time progresses. Alderman Sufferton, I know he's not here, maybe off, but I appreciated that, you know, always brought us back to, you know, basic essential services and that, you know, our residents care about those. And what are we doing when it comes to, to parking or garbage pickup or all of those things or property tax, or taxes and all of that? You know, Alderman Revelle, you know, it's just amazing. I mean, before I started, you know, I always thought of, I always thought of you as, you know, a leader and you are in the environment, I mean, you and Bill, major leaders in the environment, not just here in Evanston, but, but all over the world. And, you know, here I am having the opportunity to serve with you for four years. I'm like, oh, she's not just a leader in the environment. I mean, she's got the capacity to be a leader in affordable housing and all that, all that you've done there. And, you know, the work that you're doing in reimagining policing and what, what we can do there. So, it's just really been a, a privilege to serve with you and it's a privilege to have you as my alderman, as a resident of the, of the, of the 7th Ward. Alderman Rainey, I said it all the, I said it all the other day. I put it all, I put it all out there in the, in the naming. I'll just say what I said then, which is Ann Rainey is a force in Evanston and has been for 34 years. There isn't any major project in this city that doesn't have Ann's fingerprints on it. And that's quite, and that's quite a legacy. That's an incredible legacy. And then Alder, Alder, Alderwoman Fleming, I've said this before at a council meeting, you have a big heart. You really do. And, you know, the, the little guy out there, you know, has a champion on this council and the fact that I think you do such a good job reminding all of us about the implications of the decisions that we're making really has made a difference. And I know it will make a difference as you continue, as you continue to serve. I also just want to shout out to, to our city manager, to Erica Storely. It's a tough job being a city manager. You have, in, in the case of Evanston, you have 10 different bosses. You have a mayor and nine, nine aldermen. You lie right there in the nexus between the politics of government and the administration of government and you have to navigate that. And that is not an easy job, not an easy job at all. And Erica Storely and her entire team do a pretty good job at that. I think they do a really good job at that. And so, it has just been a proud privilege to get to work with you, Erica, and work with all of the city staff here in Evanston. And lastly, I just want to, I want to thank my family. I, I wouldn't have been able to do this without the support of my family. And, you know, and we struggled several years ago when I was deciding whether to run for mayor or not and struggled again about whether I run again. And, and my family and particularly my wife, Lisa, I mean, has carried a lot of water for our family because like all of you, you know, I'm doing a lot of work for the city. So, thank you to, to Lisa and to my entire family. With that, I am, I am going to ask if there is a motion to recess. And as I said upfront, we will recess until 7:30 and at 7:30, we, I will resume the meeting. Everybody else doesn't need to be there, but all of the, the new council members and new mayor will be there. I will resume the meeting by passing the gavel off to Mayor-elect Biss in their ceremonies. Is there a motion?
If, if I can just say, it was an honor, serving as city clerk for the last four years with every, with all of you, it's an honor working with all of you and looking forward to continuing to work with many of you.
Thank you, Clerk, thank you, Clerk Reed. And with that, is there a motion to recess till 7:30?
I move to recess until 7:30.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Deputy Clerk Gomez, could you please take the roll to recess until 7:30 PM?
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton. Councilmember Revelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainey. Councilmember Rainey.
I think she's off.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Fisk. Councilmember Braithwaite.
Aye.
Councilmember Winn.
Aye.
All right. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Deputy Clerk, I have six votes, so on a six to zero vote, we're recessing. Is that what you had?
Was, was Alderman Revelle called? I'm, I'm not quite sure I heard.
She was called.
She was called. So, I, I had a six to zero vote. Miss, okay, thank you. All right. So, on a six to zero vote, the Evanston City Council is recessing until 7:30 PM, where we will resume in the council chambers with the 81st City Council being sworn in. Thank you, everybody, for all of your service over the last four years. Good night.
Good night, everyone. You well.
Good night until 7:30.